Why don't we begin the July 16, 2020, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board? I'm going to jump around a little on the agenda, not in exactly the order that maybe we should have here. But because the first thing I want to say is for the new members, for Denise and Harry, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A pleasure having both of you. I think you guys are going to be terrific addition. And we've got, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, we've got some stuff coming up. So this is, this is a good meeting to have where there's really nothing pressing on the agenda, but there will at our next meeting. So we've got a few things going on. So in time, I'll take the agenda at the order in which it is. And the first one is the update on the request for proposals, which I don't know if all of you have actually seen this. Does everyone have a copy of this?
No.
Okay, because what I'll do is I will, I would just send it out to everyone. I have saved as a document on my computer and you can see the RFP that went out in June. And the deadline is coming up for responses, July 24 at 1:00 p.m. Anybody who's responding to this RFP. What are we hearing here?
You might want to mute Zenus.
Yeah, I mean, everyone should mute if you're not a board member at this point.
Yeah, I just went through.
Say that again, Mitch.
I just muted everybody else. We should be good now.
Okay, good. Yeah, so anyway, I'll send out the RFP. It's very comprehensive. But as you can see, everyone did receive the updated list of those entities that have requested this document. It's actually pretty heartening that there's so much interest. What we end up with, you know, who knows, but we certainly have enough requesters to end up with, you know, I would think a fairly significant group of applicants to choose from. And which is really good. So we'll see what happens with that on July 24.
Jason, what's our process for reviewing those?
Well, that's going to be a process, you know, with us and with Mitch as the administrator. First thing is they're going to have to, they're going to have to make sure that they comply with all of the essential requirements of the RFP. Obviously, if they don't, they're going to be out for that reason and that reason alone. But after that, you know, because these are, these are consultants, they're not selling concrete to the town. There is, you know, certainly variables that are involved here, experience, various other things, price. So I imagine we will, we haven't really developed this yet, but I would imagine that we, as the planning board, will have a fairly significant role in ultimate selection of, you know, whoever would be assisting us with doing this. So.
Jason, in the back of the RFP, we have the selection process laid out. So it is listed in the RFP, the role we're playing.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, would you agree with me, Mitch, that because these are professional consultants, that may be a little more fluid than just, you know, selling goods or products?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have criteria laid out as to kind of what, how we're going to assess the proposals?
Oh, yeah, very much.
Okay.
In a lot of detail.
Okay.
A weighted criteria. Yeah, it's very, very comprehensive, very transparent. And you know, well, well, we should end up with, you know, some really good candidates.
So do we do that at an open meeting? Is that the process?
Yeah, we would. I would think we would have to do it at open. You there, Mitch? He might not be, he might not be here anymore. Yeah, but I mean, I would think to a certain extent, we'd have to weigh this in public. We couldn't just go behind closed doors and decide what we want, you know. So that, you know, that's coming up. That'll be another item of business, which may be in August. I mean, August is going to be a busy month. I can tell you right now. We're going to have at least two, if not three, separate applications, which we haven't had for months in the planning board. And then we're going to have this RFP to deal with. So we're going to be, we're going to be cranking it up. It's been quiet for the last few months, but I don't think that's going to continue. Continuing education, unless anybody has anything else on the RFP, I will, I will circulate that to all members, just to catch anybody who might not have it. But on the continuing education, we did have that, there was one on the Laborator Planning Training Cooperative. I know you guys who went through that. That's terrific. I know Denise and I know Harry did. I don't know if anybody else did. I was hoping to catch it the next day rather than doing it at night, which for me right now is not a good time, but unfortunately, it's not available during the daytime yet. I hope it will be at some point later. So does anybody, either of you have any thoughts about what that training process was like or anybody else who participated?
They're going to be posting the PowerPoint on their website. And I think you'll probably, for the most part, be able to glean what you need to from the PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint?
Yeah. I mean, he pretty much read the PowerPoint.
I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that.
What was that?
He read the PowerPoint.
He read it. Oh, great. Okay, that's you. Did you guys, did you learn anything from this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, good. Anybody else participate?
I tried. I couldn't access it. I got a receipt when I registered and then I went to the dashboard and I clicked on the course and it says that view class materials. And then it says, look at the presentation below. There was nothing below. I clicked on take the quiz and it went back to the start. So I.
Yeah, you know, I, I have to say that that organization, although they do, they do a good job. They did seminars in the past and they've been pretty good. Their website is horrible and it's really very difficult to navigate. So.
I tried two different browsers. I couldn't get anything.
Hopefully, hopefully we can. I'm going to try to get it. You said Denise, it'll be available at some point in the future?
They said, when I asked the question, they said it would be on the website this week.
This week?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, because you know, you never know. You listen to these things and maybe you'll pick up one or two points that then it's worth it, you know. Okay, and the other thing on the continuing education, what I'm going to, what I'm working toward is, although this was good for, especially for the new members to do, really working for, and I've talked with Mitch about this, to having more of a regularly, regular and comprehensive continuing education for all of the planning board members. And this will either be through an outside organization or potentially the town's council has stated that they conduct seminars for the benefit of the boards. I think a seminar for our benefit and also for the benefit of the zoning board of appeals would be very desirable. I'm a big believer in continuing ed because there's always something new to learn and the law always changes. I'm worked, so that's the other thing that I'm working on trying to get in place for our board.
Jason, you sent out the ANR handbook. I found that interesting. I haven't got all the way through it, but it's pretty good seeing the case law and then the commentary.
That, that is probably one of the single best resources that you'll find on something as, you know, as difficult to deal with sometimes as an ANR. I mean, they sound simple, they're not.
It sounds simple.
No, I know. You know, it's funny because just to digress a little, you know, message, ANR process. New York doesn't. In New York, every division of property is a subdivision. But it's imminently more simple in New York than it is here because of the ANR process. There's no, because you know, the subdivision, you might file an application, you have one meeting, you have a public hearing, and if it's a simple subdivision, you're done. ANR raises all these issues that you wrestle with. I think it's an attempt to simplify something and in fact, it probably made it a little more complicated.
Right.
So, okay, next item of, the next item on the agenda is going to be the election of officers for, this would be for this year, starting June, in this case, July through June of 2021. As you know, I am chairman at, at this point. I was, I have been cut short a little bit by the, by the COVID situation in terms of meetings. I'd like to remain chairman for, certainly for at least another year, especially with this zoning revision coming up. So that's, you know, Hank was the, was the vice chairman. He's not on the board anymore. So we are going to have to nominate both a chairman and a vice chairman tonight. And that's, that's the next order of business.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jason Shaw as chairman.
I second.
And I nominate Tom Micus as vice chair.
I second.
All right. Well, why don't we, now that we have a nomination and a second, are there any other nominations? Okay, so we should, why don't we take them one at a time? Let's have a vote on, obviously, I'm not going to participate, a vote on my nomination.
I think you can vote.
Oh, sure, vote. We'll see if you vote no.
It's a roll call vote though, Jason.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. I'm going to go by, this sounds, I don't know if you're seeing the same screen, but Denise, you're a little, you're on my far left. I don't know if you're on everybody else's screen. So I'll take, I'll take you first.
Hi.
Okay. And is that Herm? You're, you're next after me?
Yes, I'll vote for both nominees.
Okay. And Tom?
Hi.
Are you going to vote for both?
Okay.
Chairman and vice, yeah. And Harry?
Aye for both.
Okay. All right. So motion made, seconded and carried. Thank you. Really appreciate your, your vote and hopefully we'll have a good, good year this coming year on the planning board.
I second that.
Okay, the next, next order of business is going to be the approval of the minutes. These are minutes of Thursday, June 18 of 2020. I think everyone has a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions or changes to the minutes that someone has before we take a vote on these? They look good to me. Anybody else?
I have to abstain. I wasn't there.
Yeah, likewise.
You're not there and Denise isn't there, so it's really, they, they look acceptable to me. Herm, I'm assuming they're acceptable to you.
They're fine.
Okay, so motion to approve the minutes as written, so moved. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, three votes.
You have to roll call vote, Jason, sorry.
Um, yeah.
Hope we don't move around on your screen.
I know. Okay, I'll take my, my vote is to approve the minutes. Herm, what's your vote?
To approve the minutes.
And Tom?
Approve.
Okay.
And Harry and I abstain.
Well, yeah, and you're abstaining because you weren't there. So. All right. Next order of business. Yeah, this, I don't know why, it's kind of funny how Mary put this on here, but this is planning administration, planning board encumbrance. This is, this was just to let you know that Mitch had encumbered for our use $34,000 and change that was in the 2018, 2020 budget for a planner for the planning board. And reason that was so important is because we, we are going to need this money to, you know, to pay for a consultant for this year when we decide we're going to hire somebody. So we have, we know we have at least that much in budget for a consultant. There's, there are going to be more in our budget for 2020, 2021. That amount is not, I don't know what that amount's going to be. It may be the same and maybe a little bit less, but I think considering the amount of time that this review process may take us between the two years, we'll have ample funds to fund the consultant to assist us with, with this review process. So that was, that was all. I just want to let you know that that was done officially and we now definitely have that money available to, to pay for our consultant. Otherwise, you know, it could have gotten lost, which it could have, but it didn't.
Just a question about the consultant. Would he be restricted to do only the revisions or could we ask him other help?
Like, what do you, what are you thinking?
Well, we, we don't have a planner on, on staff.
Right.
If we have a question that we would have asked a planner?
Yeah, I think, you know, let's see how it goes. I mean, if we have a consultant and we have issue that comes up on a, on something we're dealing with at the moment, I would think it would be not beyond the realm of possibility that that consultant would be able to help us on that issue in the future. Yeah, so that's, that's my answer on that.
I know we had difficulty finding a planner to hire.
Yeah, difficulty is like, mainly we couldn't find one.
That's big difficulty.
Under the terms that, that we had, we couldn't find one. But, but here's the deal. If we're able to tie into a, you know, a good quality planning consultant for this zoning revision, I think the kind of segue into asking that consultant to assist us with, you know, discrete planning questions is going to be a lot easier than trying to find someone who's going to be hanging around the planning board every Tuesday, you know, to help us. So I, I think it'll be, let's, let's keep that in mind. I think it'll be a lot of an easier process than how it's been up to this point.
Do you see him sort of being like on retainer as our town council is?
Um, no, I don't at this point. I don't think we need someone on retainer yet. At least last year, we haven't. It wouldn't have anything to do, essentially, you know.
Well, we don't give that much work to town council when there's nothing to do either. So it's.
Yeah, I, I couldn't answer that. Just a couple of things before we go to comments and then, and if anybody else has anything to say, please, this is the time to, these are just kind of administrative things. I mentioned earlier, we've got, we're going to have at least two ANRs, I think, coming up before the board for the August meeting. And as you know, those have a 21-day turnaround on them. We may have a, maybe not for August, but we may have a subdivision application coming up also. We are likely going to have a modification application to an existing site plan that was approved. You know, the one Herm down on Marmion Way with that, it was an inn and they turned it into a house and.
Yes, I've heard it's coming back.
Yeah, so that's coming back for landscape only, for a modification. And, you know, that, those are the ones I know about and only because people have called and asked questions. And I don't know what else might be coming down the pipe, but just to be prepared for a busy August meeting.
So do you expect all those to be filed by July 30th? Then we'd have to treat them at our meeting of the 6th?
Yeah, I expect at least one of them will be. Yeah, one of them will be for sure that we need, we will need to address it at our August 6 meeting because of the timeframe involved. So everyone, hold up on your ANRs.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it comes in after the 30th, we could do it at the.
It's not going to be, it won't be after the 30th.
Okay.
It'll be sooner than that. Anybody else have any comments?
I just have a procedural comment. So it gets timestamped in. When, do we get to see an electronic version of the application? How does that work?
Yeah, well, that's a good question, Denise, because this will be the first time that this has ever happened. Yeah, it gets time stamped in with the town and the way it should work is that that, that document is then scanned and Mary then circulates to all of the board members electronically, you know, the images. Now granted, unfortunately, they're not going to be, you know, 20 by 30 or something like that. They're going to be quite, quite small. So, but it's, you know, we're going to have to be working with those at least until we start being able to, you know, review the actual hard copy of these things. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get, the requirement is for everything, that it be a minimum of seven days. Anything that gets filed comes seven days before the, the upcoming meeting. So in other words, it's got to be filed that Thursday. But this ANR, I think we'll be getting before that. So plenty of time for board, you know, for us as board members to review it. And then, you know, when we come to the meeting, we can discuss it and how we want to proceed on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
An observation maybe leads to some work for us. DPW has a project to produce some layers on the GIS map of town to show sea level rise and storm surge as it affects their infrastructure. Because they want to know how to protect or move or whatever needs to be done with DPW infrastructure. They just had a meeting this afternoon about this. So it's in progress. It occurs to me that that could be useful for us as well. If there's going to be effects on residential areas, we expect a flood in the future. Maybe we should do some zoning things so people don't build there or restrict further their remodeling or expansion. I don't know.
Well, you know, that's an interesting point. You know, it's, obviously, there's a lot involved in making those predictions. And there, as far as I'm concerned, it's beyond my expertise to know the effect of rising seas. And but I think when we, when we look at our, it's a good thing to address when we look at our, our zoning again and whether there is something that needs to be at to address these issues. Tom, my, my concern with that is only that that is probably beyond, at least I can speak for myself, beyond my skill set in terms of evaluation. And I would need to have some guidance from somebody with expertise to make that determination.
I would think that if the town is formalizing and memorializing its estimate of what sea level rise will be and how it will affect DPW infrastructure, that we might be able to rely on that for whatever it makes sense to review in the zoning bylaws. I think it would be interesting to see what Boston has done because they've done a lot of work in this area. And, and I'm happy to try to look into that.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I mean, I, I welcome that. And I also, who's doing the, actually doing the study, Tom, do you know, for the DPW?
It's Mike Galata, the GIS manager.
Yeah, but is he actually doing the, you know, who's doing the field work to get the data that would be input, you know?
I think they have available data sets, the LiDAR for the elevations and relying on some state data for the predicted height of sea level rise. And he's got some source for a wave model that he talked about putting in. That sounds a little more speculative to me.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, this is, this is important stuff. And, yeah, so Denise, if you answer your question of you, if there's something information you can get, there's certainly nothing, there's certainly nothing wrong with getting data and considering it and determining whether or not it's something we want to, you know, include it in the zoning bylaws. We have to get the data. We have to find it's reliable and that, you know, it will have a meaningful effect on our planning process. Anything else? All right. If that's it, then we're going to go to the, there is a, usually a comment period. This is for the members of the public to comment on planning board matters. If anybody, I guess our administrator for this call needs to be able to unmute people who are in, you know, happen to be watching the meeting and want to say something.
All right. So give me just one moment to figure out how to unmute. Zenus has his hand raised. And I'm actually having a problem. If everyone could just give me one second. I'm on a mobile and I'm going to log in on my laptop. Just the laptop was lagging. Oh, I don't know if I can do that.
By the way, everyone looks great out there.
Y'all, y'all look fabulous.
Nice backgrounds, you know.
Zenus comes out kind of dark, though.
Yeah, Zenus, you're, you're kind of looking bleak. He can't answer us.
Oh, Zenus is, yeah, it's very dark.
Okay, Zenus, can you try unmuting yourself?
There we go.
Oh, he, he just muted himself, I think.
By the way, Mitch was saying there's going to be probably a real influx of people to Rockport's beaches this week.
Yeah.
Okay, so Zenus, don't do anything right now. I'm trying to unmute you. Okay, please unmute now. There we go.
All right.
Okay, Zenus, you're good.
All right. Yeah.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Good thing. Thank you, Rochelle. Z Sappel on 92 Granite Street. I haven't got too much to say, Jason, other than the fact that you know that I've been to many, many planning boards. Since you implemented the public comment section twice per meeting, I think both the so-called rattle rousers, myself and Toby, have been very obedient to being quiet during the time that you're talking and only talking at the time that we're allowed. So I would like to just bring up that when this meeting took started, I'm in my bedroom. I've been to dozens and dozens of these Zoom meetings and it's not my computer that's causing the background noise. After you did supposedly mute me at Denise Donnelly's request, I still heard much background noise. So I suggest that you watch these recordings when they're available and see if you hear the same thing. And if you do, then I would suggest that you look at the problem as being something to do with your internet connections or some type of Zoom problem with your interconnectivity rather than the background noise in my house. I'm not hearing any background noise. Is anybody else? Yeah. Well, we did go through the meeting. When, when certain people spoke, you hear an echo. But, but that's up to you. If you want to listen to another recording and see if, see the same thing, fine. If you don't, that's up to you. Okay, now we can't. I'm just saying, I'm in a quiet bedroom. So the noise here is from me. Are you, are you making yourself not visible intentionally? Yes, that's true. I got a cover over my camera. Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't a technical problem. I just think that my. I just think that my, well, never mind. All right. When I get a nice background, I'll put it up there. Okay, good. Okay, anybody else? Any other comments?
If anybody else would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No other hands raised at this time.
Other comments, okay. Just in reference to the comment period that Xenus referred to, at our earlier meetings, we had two of them, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. That's been abbreviated because the meetings have been so abbreviated, it would have been silly to have two of them, but we may end up going back to that because the meetings are not going to be so abbreviated anymore, I think, going forward. So that's just a minor administrative matter. Okay, well, I think we're at the end of our agenda and it was a nice, happy meeting. No, held at each other.
The year is young.
Year is young, right. So does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved, so moved by Denise. Anyone want to second? Nobody wants?
No, we want to stay on here. We're not, we're not.
You haven't had a nod.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Harry. I don't, we think we need a roll call vote for this. Okay.
Sorry.
I'll keep on doing it then. Motion to adjourn? Yes or no?
Aye.
Aye, Harry. Going reverse order here. Herman?
Aye.
Herm, aye. Denise?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
And I'm going to vote in favor of, zip, in favor of adjourning the meeting. We are adjourned and see you folks in August and great meeting.
Bye.
Goodbye. Goodnight to all.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.